This conference will now be recorded.
I already got that. Oh, yes, I don't. Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Vader City Council. It is October 8th, 2020 at 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers?
Here.
Jason Daly?
Here.
Randy Hall?
Here.
My first.
Here.
Samantha Lovely?
Here.
Here, stop.
Here. Everyone is here. Excellent. Pledge of allegiance. Parsons, who's due the honor?
Right, we do this due to the fact that the United States of America and the two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. First, we have a special report in a minute from the Park Board Chair that will cover item number one of the mayor's report. Item number two, Little Falls Loop, the distributions are continuing. As of today, we've handed out ninety-nine hundred dollars, so just shy of half of what we have available. Very successful. People are coming in, the businesses that they're, it's getting used already. So, very, very good program. It was great that we could offer that. Continue to let folks know if they haven't come in to get their, their portrait. Streets. We've got new gravel placed on Park and East Streets. John's continuing to coordinate some more of the gravel roads and getting some new gravel in before the weather shows up. He's also working on getting some estimates on some other stormwater work in town, the collapsed line on A Street, some culverts down by Little Crane, and then also over by the fire station, that always floods in front of the fire station. There's a culvert issue there, too. So he's working on getting grants there. He's also got a bid for some ditch work. So we'll get the gentleman to come in and dig out some ditches where the water is stagnant, so it flows properly again. And so we've got a lot of work coming on, so that's good. Next finding committee meeting is next Thursday, the fifteenth, and the park board meeting is the following Wednesday, October 21st. Council reports.
Well, I would like, from what we talked about earlier, like to report that the the Little Falls Loop coming in to the cafe and the store is greatly appreciated. We are very thankful for the support from the community, and I just wanted to say thank you for everyone.
That's great. And just to add on, I forgot to mention the businesses that were available during the Little Falls Loop. There is obviously the Daly's Mini Storage, Fine Polos Construction and Restorations with a contractor, The Hop Shop, which is a, like a bouncy house thing for parties, Janji's Grocery, Little Crane, Harwell Farms for soaps and that kind of thing, and then Promise Farms up the road on Eighth. They've got different horse tack available, too. So we've got a variety of things, some things that folks might not think of. So there are flyers at City Hall that people can come get, too. More council reports. Anybody else? Okay, agenda approval. I do have two changes to the agenda. First, Park Board Chair Kelly Shai, under the special reports, she'd like a few minutes to talk. And also under city business, item number four, council consider resolution twenty dash twenty twenty, the BNSF lease contract. We had sent that to our attorney to look at real quick, and she said she wanted to review it a little longer. There's some language that she'd like to add into that contract so that it matches some of our other BNSF contracts. And so we don't need to look at that tonight. So one removal and one addition. Anything else from anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council agenda for October 8th, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with those changes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval. We have a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for September 24th, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes for September 24th, 2020. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of September, amended for thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-four cents, and then beginning of October for twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Sergeant Fraz is here to give the monthly sheriff's report.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Fraz, and I'm here at the sheriff's office to provide the September law enforcement activity report. During the month of September, there were twenty-nine total service calls, thirteen of which were when an actual deputy was dedicated to the city of Vader, the remaining sixteen when there wasn't a dedicated deputy. During those, there were a total of two felony arrests and two misdemeanor arrests. Do you have any questions?
Were they traffic related, or?
I'm sorry.
The felony arrest, were they traffic related, or?
Traffic that turned into drug, yes.
Oh, sure.
That makes sense.
Any other questions for Mr. Fraz?
Welcome.
Yeah, definitely. Welcome to the city. And you are, you are the new representative for Vader?
I am the new representative, yes.
Excellent. Well, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, special reports continue. Park Board Chair Kelly Shai.
Hey, everybody. Um, I just wanted to update you regarding our RCO grant status. Last week, we actually got word from after our final presentation, which was two weeks ago, and we ranked ninth, ninth place out of eighty of the projects that had applied for the RCO grant. So I've been like jumping up and down and screaming and cheering and really excited about that. It's, thank you. It's, it's really exciting. It's still, it's still not guaranteed yet at this point. It just means that we've ranked ninth place on the preliminary list that RCO needs to send off to legislation. And then once legislation in February, March timeframe releases the budget to RCO, we'll definitely know for sure around that timeframe how much of the grant, or if the full part of the grant that we've requested will be applied to us. Were there any questions?
Good job. I know how hard those grants are. I mean, that grant writing stuff is, and it takes forever.
Definitely. It's been a long six months.
Yeah. A dollar amount?
Our total amount was going to be just over three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, and that was with our twenty-five percent match included into it.
Awesome. Yeah, I can say that generally looking at the way they do things, ninth place ranking would probably, it would be virtually guaranteed to be fully funded. Yeah, so now this year, a little different with COVID and the budget things and things like that. So we'll see what the state does, but ninth place is a great place to be.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, the grant manager, because I, we had our official grant manager, and we had another grant manager that was helping us with the new grant manager as well, and they were both really excited about, about our ranking. So it's, it's not a common thing for, for somebody who's applied for the right, for, for, for the grant to get that high up the first time around as well. And this is Vader's first time applying for our RCO grant that they have in their system.
Can I ask where we're getting the matching funds from?
Yes. I don't know if you remember, Donna, but when I did that presentation earlier, and we had talked about, we went through it all at the end, our matching funds is actually coming from the REIT funds, and that's something that was been set aside specifically for parks for the last several years.
Okay, and so how much was that? Are you taking the whole REIT?
No, no, we're not taking the, yeah, no, we're not taking the whole REIT fund. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me at the moment. So, um, but like I said, it was about twenty-five percent of that.
Okay, thank you.
Also, um, another portion, what, because we also have, we're going to be doing roadwork to finish off the parking over there, and to finish up the drain curb and everything to have hopefully help with the flooding, some that happens over there as well. So I think there was a little coming out of, was it some kind of a road thing? I can't remember now, but there was a little bit there as well. It was like a couple thousand dollars.
It was the FTP funds and eight thousand from that.
Okay. Were there any other questions, or?
I want to give you a lot of credit. I'd like to give Kelly a ton of credit on this. She put in hours and hours, and she's made contacts with different cities to get advice on how to do this, contacts with contractors and people in the industry that do playgrounds and, and the ground managers, some first name basis with some of these grant managers that gave her just all kinds of tips and to help push us up there. So without her, all of that work and behind the scenes stuff, this probably wouldn't have happened, so.
And we still have, we still have the playground company that has helped come up with our overall of the play equipment design. They're actually still trying to work on additional grants for us as well. They're, they're flooding us with, with grant information. He, the, the designer that I've been working with, he's actually putting in for a grant for us. He hasn't, he says he wants to keep it a surprise for the moment. So we have that possibly, there, there could be more money coming in for this project as well. Hopefully, fingers crossed.
You weren't done.
Great job, Kelly.
I was done showering with Fraz. You interrupted me.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm just really excited, but yeah.
Just great job. Thank you for all your hard work for the city. This is, this is, this level of park, I mean, we're talking about a playground that, that.
That's a word in part.
Yeah, a, a playground outside of, that you wouldn't find outside of Chehalis in the local area. I mean, this is gonna, this is gonna set Vader apart and really be something special, so.
Something that's really, something that's really important, if anybody from council is able or willing to, we really, we still need some letters of support. That is something, if I can get a couple copies of those from anyone who is in support of the project, if you have more questions about the project, you always are, please feel free to contact me. I can give, answer more questions. But if we have letters of support, I can scan those in and upload them to our, our application, and that could potentially squeeze in another half a point or so in for us as well. So that's my spiel.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Have a good day, or good evening.
Be touched. All right, moving on to city business. Council to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight, the sewer system rules and regulations. And obviously, then there's the next two, oh nine and ten. These are the same ordinances that we had available at the last meeting or two. No changes. It was requested by council that we had a little bit, a little bit more time to go through them. It would be great to finish these off and, and, and move on. And as far as the attorney is concerned, she's done, so we don't have to expend any more money on these, assuming they're, they're good to go.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight, the sewer system rules and regulations.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight, sewer system rules and regulations. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Mr. Daly, any other discussion on this particular ordinance? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to city business, item number two, council to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero nine, the sewer rate schedule. Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty twenty oh nine, sewer rate schedule.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash zero nine, the sewer rate schedule. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City business item number three, council to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, the side sewers. Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, side sewers.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, the side sewers. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you. Be nice to get those off the agenda. Item before was removed, the BNSF lease contract. We'll have more information about that. I believe that contract probably won't substantially change, so if you wanted to review it, you can take a look. But as I said, our attorney wants to make some, make some mold, change, shickery or anything, so, but you can still expect that in the future. But remove that, so we shouldn't be talking about that. Item number five, city business, council to consider resolution twenty-one dash twenty, the hearings examiner contract for Mark C. Schidmeier. So there is a, an appeal that a citizen has made with the city about the building permit and the stop work order that the city placed on it. That appeal process requires us to use the hearing examiner, which is an impartial third party that the city would have a contract with. We went to contact our hearings examiner of record. We found that the contract expired March of twenty nineteen, so last year, early last year. And, and that hearing examiner was uninterested in extending the contract. So we just found that out last week. So we did have Mr. Schidmeier on a contract that was approved last September for overflow attorney services. And so we contacted him if he would be interested in being a hearing examiner, and he said yes. And this is the contract for Mr. Schidmeier's services.
Can I ask what the, what he's doing, what is the overflow? Why is he doing that, or what? I have no idea what that means.
Yeah, so anytime, this was a contract that was approved in September of twenty twenty, so, excuse me, September of nineteen, so just last year. And it was something, I, I don't, I don't have all the details on it, but it was for overflow and attorney services. So anything that we wouldn't send to our primary attorney, we could send to him. As far as I know, I mean, at least this year, we have not used his services at all.
Well, I, I'm just wondering, if we have an attorney, why do we need another one?
Oh, but this is for the, this is for our hearings examiner. So Mr. Schidmeier would operate as our hearing examiner. In the case of the appeal process, the city attorney would represent the city and not the, the person that's appealing. So you would have the city attorney that would represent the city. You would have the person submitting the appeal. They would have their own attorney, supposedly, I would assume. In this case, they do. And then there would be, yeah, a different attorney that's a third party, not associated with the city or the person with the appeal, and they are the hearings examiner. So they're a person familiar with laws and that.
The judge.
That could be, that, yes, correct, could act like an mediator or a judge in the appeal process. So he's the person that will get all the information from all the parties and then make the final decision on whether or not the, whatever the person is appealing is correct or not.
Okay, but that wasn't the question I wanted answered. I, I want to know what the overflow attorney service is that we've used this Hillier and Satterfield and them, what, why are they involved in city business and city attorney when we have a attorney?
I said earlier, I don't have, I don't know why the city needed to have an overflow attorney services last year contract. It's a contract we have, and we have not used it.
Okay, and so we're not going to renew that part of the contract. I remember there was someone that we were paying five hundred dollars a month on a retainer that did hardly anything for months and months. So is that what this is about, or?
No, this is not about that.
Okay.
If you would like to see the other contract, it is on the city website. If you search for.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, if you search for Schidmeier on our city website, I believe the, the contract will show up. But it's from September of this past year. You could, and it's for the overflow services. But that's unrelated to this particular resolution or Mr. Schidmeier, his hearing examiner services that he would provide to the city.
I'd like to make a motion.
To approve resolution twenty-one twenty twenty, hearing examiner contract with Mark C. Schidmeier.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty, the hearings examiner contract with Mark C. Schidmeier. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All right, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, city business, item number six, council to consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty, the Lewis County Department Emergency Services contract. So this is a contract that we have with the Lewis County Department Emergency Services. It gets renewed, is it annually? Or every, it should be renewed annually. So this is fairly straightforward, straightforward thing. If we want nine-one-one, I guess, we need to have this contract, so.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty, the LC Department Emergency Services contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty for the Lewis County Department Emergency Services contract. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any other discussion?
For important clarification, this is not the nine-one-one.
Oh, this is not nine-one-one. I'm sorry.
This is the emergency management that couples with COVID and.
Okay, this is emergency management, which is not part of, nine-one-one is not part of it. It must be part of this.
Communication.
Okay, I thought they were like a sub. Okay. Yeah, so this would be emergency management, so this would be disaster relief and things like that. Okay. Hopefully, that doesn't change anyone's mind. This will be the time to talk about that, while we do have time for discussion. Any other discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, approving resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, last item of city business, council to discuss twenty twenty-one budget estimates and dates. I will turn this discussion point over to Book Treasurer Diane Floyd. She is our expert on this stuff.
So why it's been submitted to the capital is a proposed budget for the expenditures and also for the revenues. It's based on experience that the cities had for the last four years. We compared our expenditures this year to what is usual and what was actually budgeted. We're also looking forward with the revenues to what we're anticipating getting. And a lot of those are unsure right now because of COVID. We don't know what kind of response this is going to have, it could be for the city. Excuse me. So I highlighted on the, on the sheets that the people have here, yellow items that basically we're making our best guess at this point. We're going to get more information, and we're going to know more before we get to the final budget process. On the expenditure side, again, we are anticipating what we believe are going to be the expenses. In the employee section, we are not sure about salary. We've looked at the part-time employee that we get hired to do public works, possibly hiring him on to continue that position and also have some responsibility with the sewer operation. So that's an unsure amount. We have not gotten the complete figures from what employee, the employee security percentage is going to be, what the labor and industry percentages are going to be, and those, based on those, we'll determine those exact numbers. Some of them are exact. Also, the grants, we are not putting the full grant amount because we don't expect to actually use the whole grant in one year, so we're estimating what we might be using in a year. And there may be more potential grants coming. So that's kind of an overview. Do you have, have any questions? A lot of numbers.
Yeah, I would like to point out that we've got a lot of grant revenue coming in this year between, you know, now with potentially with the RCO grant with the parks, also the huge one with the wastewater treatment facility. So you'll see those numbers on there. You'll see those, those monies coming in on the revenue sheets and then going out on the expenditure sheets. Once again, they're, they're estimates until we really know what the, what the costs are going to be.
One change that I am proposing is the property taxes that come in. Currently, seventy-eight percent of those go to.
One change that I am proposing is, um, the property taxes that come in, currently seventy-eight percent of those go to the general fund and twenty-two percent goes to the street fund. Um, and the street fund seems to be always underfunded, so I'm suggesting that we change that and put seventy-five percent in the general fund, twenty-five percent in the street fund, and that should help bolster that account. Um, again, you as council will decide those things, but those, that's one of my suggestions. And that takes place in regular property taxes and also the interest that we get off of our investments.
And it's, um, I think it's fair to say that at this point in time, we're not anticipating a need to increase property taxes to balance the budget. So obviously we'll have, those, those annual hearings will be coming up and all that, um, but just putting that out there, we're not anticipating that. But of course, the council can do whatever they want, but we're not anticipating that.
I would like to see us decrease it if we can. Because a couple of years ago, we, we put it on there.
I think last year we did, but, uh, didn't we decrease it last year?
I think we.
Or did we keep it the same?
We, I think we kept it the same. One, one year we increased it to pay for the codification. And then once the codification was.
Which was not too long ago, yeah.
Yeah, um, then we, we didn't increase it, but we left that, we, is what we did, but, um.
Yeah, right now we are at the maximum of a one percent increase that you can actually do, and you can adjust that down to three quarters of percent or half of percent or, or whatever you decide would be best for the city. So you have some flexibility there.
So yeah, as we go, as we get closer, um, through this budget season, these numbers will get, uh, better and better, uh, more and more, more and more reliable, and so.
Is there, this, just to look on this, is there another, like, large bill coming in for the water utility tax line?
Where are you looking?
Um, on, on the revenues.
Yes, actually, um, I contacted the county when I was putting the budget together because we've not received our water tax from them since they.
I was curious why there was.
Yeah, and they're like, oops, we're going, you will get that to you right away, so.
Oops.
Yes.
Sorry, I should send that in my bill, oops.
Yeah, we're also missing some, um, taxing comes from our solid waste as well.
Um, did everyone get a chance to look at, um, hopefully it was sent out a while ago, uh, the dates, um, coming up, right? We have the dates and all those stuff that worked out for everybody. There was a public hearings and things like that.
I don't know anywhere.
They were, they were all on, say, council nights anyway, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, as usual, obviously, um, Thanksgiving shows up on a, a council night, and so we're going to, um, move that council meeting a little to the week before, things like that. Um, you should all have that calendar.
And then the coming weeks we'll need to vote on those changes of the meetings, so.
Right, yeah, good observation, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to make a vote on that. Okay. All right, any other discussion or questions on this right now?
Absolutely.
Hearing none, um, there will be, um, more, take time on that, obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a long season with lots of legal requirements, plenty of opportunity for change and tweaking where we want our money to go. Uh, moving on to public comment, any public comment? Thing is, there is no members of the public online and no members of the public in the audience. I'm gonna assume there's no public comment, so, um, we will move on to the elected official comments. What's officials? What comments do you have?
I just want to say how disappointed I am, nobody here to listen to us speak.
Mr. Daly is disappointed that there's no one here in the audience or online. Noted.
I think that's the first, even through all this COVID stuff, that's, that's the first.
Yeah. Uh, Donna, you were in the talk.
Uh, yeah, I have a question. I've, I've heard this on and off before about, uh, Jason having water coming back toward the restaurant. Um, what does the city have to do with that?
Um, the comment you made at the last council meeting that it was part of the, um, the ditch, was, uh, the, a ditch in Culver. So it's part of our street system.
Is that what makes the water, uh, stand down there around the restaurant?
Yeah, it backs up the water, um, and it creates the, it, it makes water flow from the bed of the railroad tracks, and then it settles in that road, and then it just spashes out puddles, and yeah, it, it's, uh, it's destroying the underside of the, the cafe as well, so I, I've been trying to get this addressed for years now, or.
And this is further, this would be further west towards, towards the creek than, so.
Yeah.
So it's in front of the mini storage area or just past it?
Yeah, it's just right in front of the mini storage, it's, it's right at the, the telephone pole, because, because what they did is they, they ran power down the pole and then shot it underneath the road right there, and that's where they dug. And, uh, you can, you can see the depression, it's, it's still there, so. But it's, like I said, it's just about for me to do long, I'm sure. They just had to bore underneath the road and in doing so, they, they ripped out that hole, so.
Yeah.
Was that the power company that did that or the, the city? Who? Who messed up the culvert? Was it the power company you're saying?
You know, I don't know who, um, the, uh, the business over there contracted to do that, to run that underneath there, I don't know what the D U D did.
Oh, German auto?
I know that a, a person, a citizen from town is the one that was running the excavator, so, um, it wasn't a different company, so I'm, uh, I, I think it was done by the, the business that's down there across the way.
German auto?
Yeah. I think it, so.
Was that Wanda wanting, running the excavator or?
No, no, it was after Wanda, yes, that, Wanda hasn't been here in a long time.
No, I know, but a lot of that happened while she was here, the, some of the.
No, this, this wasn't.
So what, what is the plan to do, what about it?
My hopes is that it, well, because we've, we've tried to send a camera up it, uh, last year or the year before, and there's a ninety-degree corner that the camera cannot go around, um, where it goes underneath, uh, the, the highway, and it actually goes from the mini storage side of the highway to underneath the highway and then out um, the, into the creek on the other side of the bridge. So, uh, the camera, the remote control camera that the city had, did, would not go around the corner. And, uh, just to get a look at what, what it, what the end of the hole would look like. But ever since that's been, uh, dug, the, uh, the, the exit hole has been draining the same amount of water on a sunny day and on a not sunny day, and when it rains really hard, it's the same amount of water. So it's, and the guy that used to live there, uh, said, you know, that's what's missing. He, he came out of his house one day and said, that's what's missing, that pipe's not shooting when it rained, it used to shoot water out of the, out of there into the creek, and now it's just, it's just like hoes, like we're gonna.
It was kind of just, just backflowing then.
Yeah, so, so it backs up all the way to the, the flat spot on the, uh, where the, the railroad crossing is, and then it pools out and comes out of the, of the, the bend of the railroad right there. And so it's, I think it's messing up more than we know because it's under the ground, but.
So what, what, what kind of a resolution, because you keep mentioning it, but I don't hear any plan to do anything about it?
We're, we're getting, uh, an, an estimate, we're gonna try to take a look at it, and I'm gonna try to get an estimate on what it would, what we think it would cost to fix it. Hopefully we'll have that for council here pretty soon.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious about that, because, you know, you hear about it and hear about it and hear about it, but nothing happens. My other question is, the, um, attorney, uh, bill, which is astronomical, at twenty-three hundred dollars, was there not at one time some kind of a limit on, uh, the monthly attorney fees? Because there seems to be no limit now, it's just other than the sky.
Uh, some of the fees for this, for this particular billing cycle were for their sewer, sewer ordinances, and so some of those, um, some of those fees are gonna try to go toward, be billed out of, um, the sewer, um, system or the, uh, the grant itself, so we're gonna try that, so they're not gonna come out of our general fund. Yeah, in the past, the city has given the attorney kind of a, a monthly limit and just said, please don't exceed fifteen hundred dollars a month unless you ask first, right? And so, um, and that is still, that is still standing. But there are some situations where we have to go over, um, for instance, the, this appeal process, um, she needed to look at some of that, so.
Now, that was, that's quite a large amount of money, what, sixteen fifty again?
Yeah, and I think, and I think a lot of that was from the sewer ordinances.
Yeah, I have another question too about the, um, um, when we were doing the Toledo, or you guys were calling Toledo for, for what? Why, why would she be calling Toledo for the loan program response? I.
Oh. Oh, that's the, uh, that was the, the sewer loan that you were, um, talking about. Uh, we want to be able to enact the, uh, the ability of, um, offering a loan to folks, um, if, since their subject went out and everything. And so she had, she had to put that into the sewer ordinances, right? Um, the council brought that up, and so she had to work on that, and so she.
Well, I brought you the whole packet for the, uh, loan application from Toledo. All I had to do was call her, and Michelle said certainly come and get a copy of it. I gave it to the city, and then we have all of these phone calls back, that wound up three hundred and fifty dollars. And you can do it on your own, uh, I mean, I called around, I got online and looked at other cities' programs and their ordinances and stuff. I just don't think we needed the attorney to do that.
There was something that, um, that she didn't have, that we, that we didn't have either, and so she, she went out and got it because we authorized her to work on that, um, loan program.
I know, but, uh, you know, I think some of our own personnel can do some of that, this is two hundred dollars an hour. Uh, that, but just a little over the top, I think. I'm done, it's same old stuff.
Okay. Um, anybody else, elected official comments? Okay, uh, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-four P M. Thank you, everybody.